Okay, where am we, sir?
Called August twelve, twenty twenty five, regular meeting to sue Vanna Planning Commission to order. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance followed by a vote of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would like to remind all of those in attendance, commissioners, staff, and members of the public, that this is a public meeting being broadcast and recorded on the county's YouTube channel, and that's at all present, behaved, ordered, civility, and respect. Now we will adopt the agenda for the meeting. Are there any recommended changes or updates?
I guess I do have one change to the agenda under new business, Pluvana County Address Policy. Want to pull that upon further discussion with staff and research. We need a little more work on this before we're going to present this to the commission. So we want to pull that, otherwise the agenda is presented as is.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the agenda with the change?
Make the motion to accept the agenda with the change.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Logmasino. Do I have a second? I have a second by Ms. Morgan. The agenda is approved. All in favor? Here, but. Sometimes it gets that way. Now we'll have the director and the board just fortune.
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, just a brief update for everyone. Uh, we have hired a new admin program specialist, Jenny Gasal Faulkner has accepted the position. Uh, she begins September eighth, uh, so for at least a few more weeks, you're stuck without us, but Jenny will be starting and we are anxious to have her starting. Uh, you were contacted in the last day or so about a community meeting, and I will apologize for the delay in getting the word out, but this Thursday, August fourteenth, at the high school is a community meeting, open house on the project expedition project. Uh, you received a notice of special call meeting from the chair. Uh, the reason that was done was to allow as many commission members as possible to attend without running afoul of FOIA rules. Uh, the village residential zoning, uh, we, we are not quite ready to proceed. We are still trying to coordinate with a university, uh, to work with one of their programs to assist us with that. Um, I've tended to get in touch with both the UVA and VCU. I'm still waiting for a response back. And I'm also looking to reach out to other schools, but I will keep everybody updated on that. As soon as we have someone, uh, ready, we'll get moving on that. Uh, the technology zones, I did want to comment briefly on that. There, there have been a couple of questions about this. Uh, staff have been working with the county's economic development authority on potential development of a technology zone overlay. In discussing with staff, the, the, the reasoning is that this is being envisioned as the EDA doing the research on this and then making a recommendation to the PC. And the reason is, the feeling is that they're, since they're experts in the, in the field, it'd be better for them to do the research and come back with the recommendations, which they would be bringing back to the planning commission. So, uh, just for your information. As far as tonight, we have three public hearings on the agenda. Zoning text amendment for food trucks or mobile food units. Uh, zoning text amendment for review process for plats and plans and a rezoning related to the Fork Union Drive-In. Uh, we do have a resolution on the agenda tonight for event permits for ZTA. And under new business, we do have, uh, presentation, uh, about the board of zoning appeals. They do have a meeting next Tuesday, and we'll be discussing the items on that agenda. And upcoming public meetings, uh, September ninth, uh, we are planning to have that one here in the Morris Room. Uh, work session to be determined at six, regular meeting at seven. October seventh, uh, there's a chance we will be moving that depending on the agenda. Uh, and what's on the agenda, we may be expecting a larger than anticipated crowd. Uh, so I'll keep everyone posted on that. Uh, and then the November meeting, uh, normally we'd have that on the eleventh, which is the Tuesday after the first Wednesday. However, that is a state holiday, and you may recall in January when we adopted or approved the, um, scheduled meetings, uh, for November, it was, uh, approved to have this meeting on November eighteenth. So just keep that in mind, and I'll of course will remind everyone, uh, as that date draws closer. I'll take any questions.
October seventh, that did the first Tuesday, so right, don't get confused. Any other question? Okay, the next item is approval of minutes. Uh, is there a motion for the approval of the minutes of June tenth for any changes or questions?
I have a point to raise on page four of the minute. That we were considering the VHO group, the MP twenty-five oh one. And there we have the, the block where the votes are all recorded. And, uh, uh, I was certainly in favor of that, and it is written in the minutes that that's a name. So I would like.
What page are you on, sir?
Page four. In my PDF file, it's page four.
Oh, is this the motion to, uh, advertise a public hearing to consider EMP twenty-five? I see it. That, that is a typo. We will correct that.
Can we approve the minutes within?
If you can, just whoever makes the motion, just note it with that amendment.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the June tenth, twenty twenty-five, uh, with the, the exception, uh, the typographical error to be changed?
I'm, and we accept the June tenth minutes, subject to correcting the noted typo on page four.
Motion we said, so I have a second.
Sir?
Okay. So have a motion to accept, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir. I was just gonna ask you, the second was on the motion.
Well, it was two people that said it, uh.
I'm in.
It is me.
Mr.? It's ladies name.
Go ahead, go ahead, sir, sorry.
Okay, I've also have approval of minutes for the July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes for the July fourteenth?
I move that we approve the minutes of July fourteenth as written.
I have a motion by Ms. Kilpatrick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Morgan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, crew five zero. The next item is public hearing. We'll now open it, first round of public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the commissions, come to the podium and state your name and address. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes on topic. And please remember this is not a question and answer session, the purpose to get from you. Anyone wishing to address the planning commission at this time, please come forward. See, no one coming forward, we will end the first of two public comment section. And we'll go on to the next issue, which is public hearing. Uh, the public hearing for ZTA twenty-five oh four, amend the code of it, kind of blue, blue Vanna, Virginia by assigning mobile food unit and authorizing such activity by right in all zoning districts. The support.
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, this is a proposed zoning text amendment to amend the county code. Excuse me, amending specifically sections twenty-two dash twenty-two dash one to add the definition of mobile food unit, and then amending twenty-two dash three dash two point one, twenty-two dash four dash two point one, twenty-two dash five dash two point one, twenty-two dash six dash two point one, twenty-two dash seven dash nine point one, twenty-two dash eight dash two point one, twenty-two dash nine dash two point one, twenty-two dash ten dash three, twenty-two dash eleven dash two point one, twenty-two dash twelve dash two point one, and twenty-two dash thirteen dash two point one to authorize the activity as by right and all, allow by right in all zoning districts. Uh, you may recall, we, we've had some discussions about this over the last few months. Uh, the county code currently does not define mobile food unit or identified as allowed use, and, and our, our position has been that if it's not listed as an allowed use, then it's not allowed. Uh, this, this was a little bit of an issue a number of months ago where we had a food unit operator, uh, wanting to locate a, a, a mobile unit, and I was able to come up with an interpretation of the zoning ordinance to allow it in that particular area. So this would basically alleviate any confusion and, and, and make it simple. Uh, the definition of mobile food unit is taken from the Code of Virginia, section three point two dash sixty-four hundred. And again, this has been developed and worked on after the months of discussion with the planning commission, and you have a copy of the ordinance change in your packet for tonight. And I can read it for you very quickly. It's, it's pretty straightforward. Under twenty-two dash twenty-two dash one, um, definitions, uh, mobile food unit, a restaurant that is mounted on wheels and readily movable from place to place at all times during operation. And then all those other sections I list, just list, uh, adding this as a use permitted by rights. And that's all our districts. That's S one solar, A one agricultural, R one, R two, R three, and R four residential, uh, B one of VC business, I one and I two industrial, and in the manufactured, the home park district. Uh, at this point, I will take any questions the planning commission may have.
Anyone in the planning commission have any questions? If not, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward to speak on this matter, please come forward, state your name and address. You'll be limited to five minutes.
Name just Donald Reiner, thirty-five, thirty-one, fifty miles road. And question I have on this is, will the mobile food units be limited to stay X number of feet or yards away from existing restaurants or new restaurants? Because it's been a problem in Elmore County.
Do you want us to answer questions now or after these?
Uh, we're, it's, those are not the only bit of question and answers actually, but, but we can, uh, address that at, uh, uh, we'll address that at the end of the hearing. Anyone else wishing to come forward, speak on this matter, please come forward, state your name and address. You'll be limited to five minutes.
It's not letting me. Let's not.
Do we have any other questions?
It's not. Where are we just a second? I can answer your question while these working on that. So basically just. Uh, yes, hopefully.
Uh, I close the public here at this time.
So I can answer that question. There's no restrictions on how far the level of the units need to be from other restaurants. So they can, um, so be, and so parking, and sometimes you'll see the one at Food Line at the gas station there.
Yeah.
That's your one, and so you can still do that right there, then you have your pop of gems and put the G area right there. Somewhere above mine, so there's no restriction for those.
Like, uh, in Charlesville down the, uh, corner High Street, two fifty, I see all kinds of food trucks there. Restaurant next door, and a restaurant that's like that, so evidently it's no restriction anywhere, because like even in Scottsville, uh, the, the loving oven trucks right on the corner, all the other restaurants are there too. Okay, is there any other question from the planning commission?
Let's see.
A show.
Sue pencil.
Do I have a motion?
Weird. I think he's worked on.
Yeah, bear with us just a second here. We're, we're having some technical difficulties.
I need the one out of the tech.
You, you're welcome to. It should be the same, yes, but.
I moved that the planning commission.
Go ahead.
I move the planning commission recommend approval of ZTA twenty-five oh four. An ordinance to amend and reordain the code of the county of Vanna. Virginia by amending paragraphs twenty-two, tag twenty-two, tag one, twenty-two, tag three, tag two dot one, twenty-two, tag four, tag two dot one, twenty-two, tag five, tag two dot one, twenty-two, tag six dot two dot one, twenty-two, tag seven, tag nine dot one, twenty-two, tag eight, tag two dot one, twenty-two, tag nine, tag two dot one, twenty-two, tag ten, tag three, twenty-two, tag eleven, tag two dot one, twenty-two, tag twelve, tag two dot one, and twenty-two, tag thirteen, tag two dot one. To define mobile food unit and to authorize such activity by writing in all zoning districts.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Dorsey. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Morgan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, crew five zero. The next item is the ZTA twenty-five oh seven. Amend the code of Fluvana County, Virginia, conform to the code of Virginia by removing planning commission approval authority for the administration, administrative review process for plats and plans, assigning such authority solely to the subdivision agent by changing certain review timeframes tied fortunes.
Can we just a second, Mr. Chair? Ms. Harris is not showing up there. Just go to, go root, go to the, um, presentation.
I'm not sure what is happening. It keeps bouncing back. We repair everybody's faces and honestly, we can stay there. It would be okay. But the bouncing back forth is. And there's the flag, so.
I, I would just, I would. Okay, hopefully everyone can see the screen here in the room. Okay, so apologies. We're, we're not quite sure what's going on there. We're trying to move this. So this proposed amendment, what amend the county code by amending sections nineteen dash two dash one, nineteen dash three dash two, nineteen dash three dash four, nineteen dash three dash five, nineteen dash three dash six point two, nineteen dash four dash five, nineteen dash five dash two, nineteen dash six, six dash two, twenty-two dash fourteen dash two, and twenty-two dash twenty-three dash eight to basically bring the county in, into compliance with the Code of Virginia requirements by removing planning commission approval authority for the administrative review process for plats and plans and assigning that authority to the subdivision agent and also amending certain review timeframes. Uh, and, and just for everyone's benefit, the subdivision agents meeting. Um, this is being brought about by changes in state code, Senate Bill nine seventy-four, changed the statutory review process to eliminate planning commission review and assign that review to the designated agent, which in our case is the subdivision agent. And then House Bill twenty-six sixty, shortened the timeframes, uh, for local government approvals. Both bills were signed by the governor, March nineteenth, and took effect July first. So just to remind everybody, this is a change in the state code. This is, this is being mandated, so which is why we're doing this.
Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, why? All right. Give me a second here. It's not, uh, it's not paging up and down. Okay.
So my understanding is that, um, the board of supervisors designates, or according to the law, um, who the subdivision agent is going to be. Is that correct?
That's right.
Is it by code that it is?
It's, it's the board. I mean, normally it's the planning director, but, uh, the board makes that designation.
Okay. And there's a law specified whether or not that designation is to an individual or simply not to the planning commission as whole.
Well, you could have, you know, in larger localities, you could have multiple people.
Right.
With that designation.
But it, it has to be on the population under five thousand before.
Or, or the planning question.
Could be, be dealt.
My question.
That's the way that the order is written.
Yeah, all right.
Well, this is, this is a statutory change.
Correct. There, there might be more changes next July first, because they convened the study group to look over this bill, which makes sense to do a study group after you initiate legislation. But, so, um, I know there's a couple, I think the Hampton City attorneys on that, um, group. So they're all looking, see if they get some, there might be some tweaks this year in the General Assembly. And so there might be some further changes next July first.
Are you aware of whether BML or the, um, VACO has taken a position on this bill?
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure VACO and BML have a representative on this study group. And then local government attorneys, that would remember, they have a representative.
But you're not aware, if you testified during the session, one way or another.
Um, I don't, when we are up at VACO Day, I don't really, Kelly, Eric, you.
No, I, I don't.
Yeah, I don't really recall them really highlighting this bill. This one, one of the bills that are really pushing. Um, so I, I don't know if this is one of those bills that got tweaked toward the end. Um, but it really, it kind of came out of nowhere. For most other attorneys I was talking to, they weren't even aware it was coming down the line. So I don't know if it was one of those ones that got stuck in at the end. Um, but, because sometimes you see that, because it's, like I said, it's unusual to do the study for after the fact. So, uh, I'd have to look at that bill history and talk to VACO and see that. When I went to legislative day in Richmond, I don't remember them highlighting this bill to a great degree, like one they were, you know, going to. Because they'll say you go out, talk to your legislator, and I remember this thing, what the bills were, they were very concerned about. So I think it must have been amended after legislative day, um, to its current form.
Yeah, it does seem to be a piece with the direction that home builders and the real estate agents have been going for a couple of decades, but it also appeared to kind of pop up, um, rather subtly.
Yeah, and that, that, that next to me, I can always look through the legislative history and kind of see how more from. It's also, it's where we talked about the last thing, the House version is different than the Senate version.
Sure.
And usually they come together then and they marry each other, but the language is, and the, but for those bills is totally different. So that's, so that shows that it was really amended toward then.
Right.
Since they didn't match each other, they basically ran out of time. She just approved it.
Took two versions of the pass.
One of the other things I saw was the fact that, uh, it was taking so long to get to the state about this approval from the state about different things, so forth like that, because it was going, planning commission going to, and then it could be deferred, so forth like that. There were thick and bumps. And I think they lived, it took what, forty-five days on this?
Forty, or forty-five, forty days.
Yeah.
And then time. Then it could be, yeah, it's time as well. So it was just local level.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to come forward to, to speak on this issue, please come forward. State your name and address. You'll be limited to five minutes. But no one wishing to speak, we'll close the public hearing. The next item on the agenda. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. I have to read these scripts now that I used to not read, I get confused. Do I have a motion, uh, to approve or disapprove or?
I'm gonna pull a fast one and we'll see what happens. I move that the planning commission recommend approval of twenty-five oh seven and ordinance to amend and reordain the code of the county of Virginia by amending paragraphs in section nineteen to conform to the code of Virginia by removing planning commission approval authority or administrative review.
You don't have to read all the sections.
You have to read them all.
You have to read all the sections.
They could. He asked.
I'm sorry, are you amending my?
Proposing a motion?
Do you really have to read all that stuff?
You do.
Which case I withdraw my motion. I introduce a new motion. Where I move that the planning commission recommend approval of. That, that should be ZTA. There's a typo in that slide. Do you have to read it exactly? Twenty-five oh seven, and ordinance to amend and reordain code of County Fluvan of Virginia by amending sections nineteen, tag two, tag one, nineteen, tag three, tag two, nineteen, tag three, tag four, nineteen, tag three, tag five, nineteen, tag three, tag six, dot two, nineteen, tag four dot five, or tag five, nineteen, tag five, tag two, nineteen, tag six, tag two, twenty-two, tag fourteen, tag two, and twenty-two, tag twenty-three, tag eight, to conform to the code of Virginia by removing the planning commission approval authority from the administrative review process for plats and plans and assigning such authority solely to the subdivision agent and by changing certain review timeframes.
I have a motion by Mr. Dorsey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Logmasino. And a third by Ms. Kilpatrick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's approved five zero. The next item on the agenda is EMP twenty-five oh two, Fork Union Drive-In rezoning.
Soon as I can.
This way, street.
Yeah, this drive street, since I can pull this up. There we go. Go ahead, Jason.
All right, uh, good evening. This is a request for, um, ZON, EMP twenty-five oh two, Fork Union Drive-In. This is a request to rezone from A one agricultural general to B one business general zoning district of approximately two point seven four acres, fourteen acres of tax, fifty-one, section A, parcel sixty. Such property is generally located on the west side of Windsville Drive, State Route six twelve, approximately two tenths mile from its intersection with US fifteen at Weber City. Parson located Fork Union Community Planning Area and the Fork Union Election District. Um, so the reason they're doing this is in order to, when they had a survey done, a modern survey that shows that part of Drive-In is on their adjacent property, which they own, they want to rezone a little portion of that and then do a boundary line adjustment, which is what I'm gonna show you right now. Okay, so that's the, can you go back one slide, Todd, real quick?
Yeah.
If you can, it's not, don't worry. So that's the survey we were working with when they originally applied for their um, outdoor entertainment to menu. So now to the next slide, please. And this is a clip of, of their new survey. So blue is the current existing boundary for the drive-in. The red will be the new boundary after the, um, zoning change. This is the area in between that, subject to this zoning west rezoning. All the property will be added to Fork Union Drive-In. Couple of quick bullet points, uh, I've already said, actually said them, resurvey indicates that part of Drive-In is occupied adjacent parcel, that's on day one. Um, you can't, uh, do a boundary line adjustment from two different zoning districts that have to be the same. Hence the need to reason part of this larger tax parcel has to be rezoned, and then it can be adjusted and moved into the Fork Union. They also, uh, panel picking up an area to put the drainage field to support the new bathroom facilities as well. Um, it's that easy?
Do you see?
Uh, Mr. Mr. Understall, um, Understall is here. If you have any questions for, for him.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Overstreet, or Mr. Understall?
Us, intensity.
Yeah. When, when we, when we have.
When I open the public here.
Okay.
No other question? I'll open the public hearing that just passed.
I was just gonna say, he's the applicant. Does he need to be limited to the public hearing to comments?
No, I mean, normally the way we do it is when we open the public hearing, applicant speaks, and then, and the public hearing, they get to speak again and rebut anything that was spoken, but, I mean, if applicant wants to speak before the public hearing, maybe I guess we could do that way. So we normally don't know.
Would have the good light come forward.
Sure.
Just invited you by his.
Thank you. Uh, Ronald Understall, at the five seven eight Bill Thompson Trace, and, uh, as you recall, I represent the owners. And I'm, uh, the business end of this project, so I'm getting the business in shape for startup. And the reason why we need to do this is, uh, we're trying to, uh, get everything proper in the drive-in into this, um, this B one property, and then we're gonna dump everything into an LLC. And that will prepare the business for long-term success, because we can put liability insurance around it, builder risk insurance around it. And ultimately, when the family is prepared to sell it, it will be easy to lift and shift and sell this drive-in. Um, they, we, um, the family owns the agriculture piece around it, and they intend to keep that for a while until they find somebody else to, to buy it. Right now, somebody's kind of hanging on it. So this is just, uh, sets us up for long-term success and, um, you know, right thing to do. But things are moving forward, and, uh, just want to remind you that we're, we're having a opening ceremony on September thirteenth with fireworks and concession stand and music and, um, uh, Ginger Riveri and, uh, hardware hills will be there, as well as some antique cars and, uh, some vendors, and we hope to all see you there.
Thank you. Any question?
Do they have any offers yet?
Any what?
Offers.
To buy it?
Sell it.
Uh, we've had many over the years, but actually the, the, the person who wants to buy it and who we would like to buy it is, uh, John Lamb and his family, who's gonna be. The way this is, is we're gonna own it for a while. Lease it to John. He's gonna run it. He'll be the new face of the drive-in. And after a year or two of operation, he should be in a position to buy it, and I'm hoping that the family will be confident that, uh, that's the right thing to do. But right now, they're not willing to partner. The business is owned, built and, and ran by their, their father, you know, F F White. It's a lot of scent to them. It's old value there. But I think once they see that the drive-in is up and running and successful, they'll feel very comfortable with that. So this sets us up for doing that. But I think once they see that the drive in is up and running and successful, they'll feel very comfortable with that. So this sets us up for doing that.
Thank you. If anyone else wishing to come forward, please come forward. State your name and address. You'll be limited to five minutes. Seeing no one coming forward, I will end the public. Uh, do I have a motion?
I hope that the planning commission recommend approval of CMP twenty five oh two. A request to resume from A one agriculture general to B one business general. Zone district two point seven four plus or minus acres. Of fourteen acres to tax man fifty one parcel A parcel, section A parcel C C. Sorry.
Okay, I have a motion by Miss Gilpatrick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Morgan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Let's prove five zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is resolutions. The ZTA twenty five oh eight amend the code of county of Virginia by clarifying under what. Circumstances special event will need permit, Mr. Fortune.
Okay, here this is a proposed ETA before the commission to amend uh county code, specific to section twenty two dash twenty two dash one. To amend two definitions, one outdoor entertainment and the other outdoor gathering. Uh, to clarify when a special entertainment permit would be required for such events. Uh, you may recall, we had some discussions late last year about events and it actually is um been brought up again recently. Uh, because of two big events planned in September one is the uh the event Mister Understall just talked about. Um, so a- as such, we are requesting commission approval of a resolution to advertise a proposed ETA for a public hearing. Uh, if approved, the public hearing will be held September ninth by the planning commission. Uh, resolution advertisement proposed ordinance are in the packet. Uh, there is also a separate issue that that's not addressed in this ETA about how permits will be approved going forward, whether it's done administratively. Or whether those are still brought before the board. Uh, and there is, uh, I will. Read the. Post ETA for everyone. Uh, under section twenty two dash twenty two dash one, rules of construction, outdoor entertainment would be revised to read as. Predominantly spectator uses conducted in open or partially enclosed or screened facilities, but not including public facilities. Typical uses include, but are not limited to sports arenas, entertainment and music festivals. Motor vehicle or animal racing facilities and outdoor amusement parks, parks for which a charge is imposed for admission. If the use is expected to attract a thousand or more people at one time, a special entertainment permit shall be required. In accordance with county code section seven dash one dash three. And then outdoor gathering, that definition revised to read. Any temporary organized gathering expected to attract two hundred or more people at one time in open spaces. Outside and enclosed structure for which a charge is imposed for admission to the activity. Including this type of the entertainment and music festivals, church revivals, carnivals and fairs. And similar transient amusement and recreational activities otherwise not otherwise listed in this section. County sponsored events and public school sponsored events shall not be included within this definition. Don't take any questions that commission might have at this time.
The main thing is it uh only permits or acquired if they charge emissions.
And is this? Is the amended version that you have that's being, I guess it's only a resolution to advertise, but. Sometimes what you advertise is you're locked into certain things. So I just want to make sure is there. Administrative is 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 what you brought up about administrative approval included in what we're advertising?
It no, it is not addressing what we're asking to advertise.
Um, that that has to come to the board because that's not under the zoning chapter.
Okay.
That's under chapter seven. So that will come to the board. Uh. I believe we'll be advertising it August twentieth, and there'll be a September public hearing. And then the board will decide if we want to continue the board approving SCPs or if it should be administrative through the planning department.
Right, and as far as the drive in special use permit, the 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 conditions in their special use permit if. If this is is passed in the manner that it's being proposed tonight to advertise, it would prevent them. If there's administrative approval from having to file for a special event permit every time they do something like this or.
Unless they all have more than a thousand people.
Okay.
They have more than a thousand people, they'll have to have a special.
And if they're charging admission.
And if they're charging admission. So this will really expand their use there. Basically, their event on September thirteenth uh would not require an SCP if this definition is passed.
Well, can I ask one question? Was a question I was advised to pass. Um, I know we put some um. Exemptions in there for county. What do you got, Tommy and something else?
County and school sponsored, public school sponsored.
The big question is, isn't that giving the county and public school an unfair advantage to other? Businesses, schools.
That's pretty normal that government facilities are exempt from setting the ordinance says, you know, have different authority. I mean, that was our the language on outdoor gathering was already in there. Basically, it said activities held in public parks or on public school property were not. Um, not part of the definition.
But we added that sentence about county and county schools. I guess my question was is.
Oh, we can keep that that existing. All we did was change it from the actual property owned by the county and the schools to county sponsored. So it's cool. So if someone wants to do a Pleasant Grove, wants to do a music festival and charge admission. Then, you know, it fall under the special use permit. So that was the reason why we kind of went that direction.
So if I if I can, the existing language was such activities held in public parks or on public school property shall not be included within the use type. And proposed change is county sponsored events and public school sponsored events shall not be included within this definition.
Right.
That's that's change.
That is change. Uh, and I guess the question is. If I ran a private school. And this is hypothetically talking and this is how it was brought to me. If I ran a private school. And I wanted to have an event similar to what a public school is having. I will have to go through an approval process and could potentially get denied. And then the public school could have the event given them an unfair advantage over me. Because they're not required to go through the approval process.
But yet a private school charges people to come to it, but a public school does not.
That's that's not my question. My question is about the permit itself. Um, not about the fees. The question came to me about the permit itself is that is giving the public schools. An unfair advantage over the private schools because the private schools event that potentially get canceled. And the public school can hold the exact same event and not do anything. And the word that came out was was arbitrary and capricious.
Well, I mean, the language has been in our code section that.
Not that one section Todd read because he put he brought that to us the last meeting.
So the language is in there right now today. Is such activities held at public parks or on public school property shall not be included within this use time. So that exemption is already indicated.
But where is that in this packet? I couldn't find what you were reading in the packet that was sent to us.
I'm looking at the online packet.
I've got it open.
Uh, okay, there should be. There should be after the uh packet on the ZMP twenty five oh two, there's a page with a resolution on it. And then after that is the page where they propose to order its change.
I don't I don't see it in my packet. That's why I've asked. Or is it? Okay, there is. So, but it goes back to my question. Because at the last meeting, there was an exemption from public. County and public schools. And I guess it's where this person got it from because then they're asking, isn't that? Giving the county and public school unfair advantage over private. For those types of events.
I mean, it's definitely not arbitrary capricious.
No.
I mean, it's just a reasonable standard.
What they threw out to me, but I see the unfair advantage that could be there because. If. Open door wants to have this big event. And the high school might want to have the same type of event, so they're too competing against each other. Whereas the high school doesn't have to go through the approval process, but the public school does and theirs could be. Denied that giving the high school the advantage to go ahead and have their event and because we're talking about money. And that's what they're saying is maybe that's an unfair advantage.
Well, you know, my thinking is the the private school is a business. Where the public school is not a business.
Why not?
It's taxpayer funded.
Well, it's still a business.
I just have to say.
Well, I I okay, but I'm asking a legal question to the lawyer first.
I'd like to just say, if I may. Having worked in both the federal government and state government, I'm not aware of any unit. Giving itself a permit. It just seems kind of silly. If, you know, it's if the event, I it's just unprecedented. For the government, the same body in the government to give itself a permit to do something. Um, whereas that same kind of event on private property is a different matter. For the purpose of public health and safety, et cetera, et cetera. So I hear that it seems at first blush to to feel that way. But it's just not arbitrary and capricious and is, you know. Comes along with owning the property and being the regulatory agency at the same time.
I understand. I also worked in the state for the state government for years. And I understand these people's point also is that. When you're talking about schools and in this day and time, everybody is out here trying to make money to survive.
Sure.
And I see his point in that if you're allowing. Public schools to do stuff that you're not allowing private schools to do and you've given them extra steps. There is always that potential for that private school event not to be approved. And then the public school is allowed to do it. So they're making money and the private schools aren't. And that's why I'm asking the legal, are we setting ourselves up here?
I don't have any legal concerns. I don't.
Because obviously their lawyer did have legal concerns about it and I'm just bringing it up just as a question.
What is the fee associated with this?
Well, based for an SUV, the fee is five hundred fifty dollars.
I'm not even, I don't think he was even talking about it.
What are you talking about? The SCP fee, the special entertainment, wait, uh, event permit fee.
Event permit.
That's right now it's two hundred, but that's one thing the board will be discussing if they want to. Change that fee once it goes to the planning department. If. Planning departments will be approving it administratively, do we want to lower the fee? So that's one of the things we'll be talking to the board on the twentieth.
But the fee, the permit fee was not even a topic of a conversation. It was the topic about making money as a payday event. Not the fee for the permit, but it's a paid event that could potentially be denied. Giving the public schools the ability to have the exact same event.
I mean, that was one of the reasons I changed it to this language is because. My worry was that if someone wanted to do a music festival or wine and craft festival at Pleasant Grove and charge admission, you know, a third party doing it. That basically under this current definition, it was exempt. So I was like, well, how about we have county sponsored events? So then if someone's using county facilities, they still have to go. Through the SUV process and then they're on the same level playing field as any other. You know, private party trying to organize the event. So that's why I propose changing. Into this instead of just um the property owned by the county.
Did anybody else have any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I hope that the planning commission prove the resolution to advertise a public hearing on September nine. Two thousand twenty five to consider CDA twenty five oh eight. An ordinance to amend and reordain the code of county of Virginia. By amending section twenty two dash two dash one to amend the definition of outdoor entertainment and outdoor gathering.
Have a motion about this kill Patrick. Do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Have a second amendment to Dorsey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Chair votes aye.
I deny.
You.
I do. I don't prefer.
Okay, you voted nay.
Nay, nay.
Okay, okay. Uh, four one. It is approved. Going on to our next item is unfinished business that comprises the plan update, Mr. Fortune.
I have two slide presentations that are both very brief. Uh, first is just to give an update. Uh, the advisory groups are still leading and and working on. Uh, different sections of the plan, different documents. Uh, work has begun on making updates to individual sections of the plan. Um, I I do have, I do want to talk about meetings in a minute, but uh we we started working on. Uh, revisions to the vision statement, uh, the introduction, uh, sections two and three. Uh, and also some very just barely getting started on section five and. Just about to get started on section six and uh. So that that's going on. Uh, we are still hoping to have a a draft plan ready. Uh, for review sometime shortly after the first of the year. We're still at for now at least on target for having. A plan ready for planning commission uh recommendation in the spring of next year, but I will keep everybody posted on the status. As far as meetings for each group, just so everybody knows, economic development means August twenty seventh at four thirty. Uh, rural preservation August twenty sixth at five thirty, uh, housing August twenty seventh at three. Uh, historic preservation to be determined. And there's actually a reason for that, uh, going down to the next bullet point. Uh, we've had a little bit of turnover on our advisory groups. Uh, Ms. Roth has resigned from the housing group. Uh, signing time constraints, uh, just fitting it into her schedule. Uh, that has left the housing group with four members and we did discuss this at the last housing group meeting. And the consensus among the members was that they could continue to function with four members. So we're not uh asking for any changes to that group. Um, Ms. Johnson, who was the chair of the historic preservation group, has stepped down from that group citing health concerns. Uh, excuse me, leaving that group with three members. Uh, we have had unfortunately, uh, some some attendance issues. Uh, so we will be asking the the chair to to make an additional appointment to the historic preservation group. I was hoping to have a a name tonight. There was an individual who. After the groups have been appointed, had had expressed an interest and I reached out to that individual. And they they specifically wanted to sit on rural preservation. We already have five members on that group. So I will need to, we'll need to reach out uh. And uh and solicit uh applications for the historic preservation group. So I'll take any questions on that part of my presentation.
Isn't the E D making that change to September seventh?
I will double check that date.
Thought I saw an email.
Let me double check that date for you.
Because I moved it off my calendar.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions about the? Advisory groups.
Et cetera. Okay, so then yeah, so one quick change that the economic development meeting got moved to September second. So.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah, I got one more presentation. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So that's for sure. September second or you checking?
I'm going to confirm that for you.
Okay.
Back to let me see if I can do that on my phone real quick. Um.
Sorry.
You're you're fine. Yeah, September second. So sort of that typo. Um, okay, so I have a second presentation. This is also very short. Uh, Alex Porter, our planner G I S technician, has been uh further refining the uh. The data from the survey responses uh as upon a request to break this down by district. So he has. Um, created folders with the data for each for each question shown. With numbers by overall for all districts and then for each district. Then he also has information showing the methodology. I have a flash drive here. Someone would like to. Download this onto the laptop. They are welcome to do that before you leave tonight, uh, or if not, uh, we can arrange for you to get this. But I just want to show you a couple of examples. Uh, this is the question about the age group, the responses to the age group, the age by age group. Uh, the these uh this the examples you're seeing on your screen, uh, upper right hand corner is all responses. And then lower left is uh Fork Union District by age. And then lower right is Columbia District by age. And just to give you a quick uh. Synopsis, just in case you're having trouble reading that slide for a fork union district, uh, thirty three percent of respondents were sixty five or older. Eighteen point nine percent age fifty to sixty four, uh, thirty six point eight percent, thirty five to forty nine and eleven point three aged eighteen to thirty four. And then in Columbia District, you had thirty eight point four percent sixty five and older, uh, thirty one point two percent fifty to sixty four. Twenty three point two percent thirty five to forty nine and seven point one percent eighteen to thirty four. Uh, and just to give you a comparison, county wide, the the age breakdown was forty two point nine percent sixty five or older. Twenty five point five percent fifty to sixty four, uh, thirty five to forty nine was twenty four point six percent and eighteen to. Twenty five point five percent fifty to sixty four, uh, thirty five to forty nine was twenty four point six percent, and eighteen to thirty four was seven percent. So. For those two districts, the, the uh. Especially for Columbia, the age red, the age skewed a little bit older. Just so that's the kind of data that's going to be in this thumb drive. And then one more example for you, um. Question twenty one, which is the uh, county priorities. Uh, the top one is countywide. Uh, priorities, healthcare and care is top priority with preserving open spaces, farms and forests, a fairly close second. Uh, then broadband internet, fire and rescue, and. The example you see there bottom of your screen is uh, broken down by Palmyra District. Uh, healthcare version care was a a runaway top choice. Observing open farms, open spaces, farms and forests was second, then parks and recreation, broadband internet. So just give you some examples of of what is um. Broken down here. There we go. So again, it's on a flash drive. If you'd like to see, you can either stop by Department of Planning and Zoning, you can reach out to Alex. Um, to get this data, uh, it's, there's a lot more than what's what I showed you, but that just gives you a couple of examples. Any questions?
What's next in terms of handle what they see this data on? And putting it to use as we move forward with.
So when we, so when we go to up, as we work on updating the sections of the plan. The survey responses will need to be. At the very least, referenced, if not incorporated into recommendations as we go to update those.
Any more on the unfinished business?
No, I don't have anything else certain.
You're going on to new business. Uh, B G A process was over street.
So I'm actually going to take, uh, Jason and I will kind of take this one together. Um. So here, Jason is zoning administrator, oversees the board of zoning appeals meetings. And you want to take this first slide, Jason, and I'll take it then.
Uh, sure. So the B C A occasionally hears requests for variances, appeals, zoning decisions, they lead as need, but the third goes day of the month. Um, for section twenty two dash eight ten dash four A, uh, prevent a code. Applications for variances are to be presented to the planning commission. And the planning commission has three options, take no action. Make a recommendation to B C A or attend meeting as a party to the public hearing. Um, we've got two variants scheduled for next week. Um, they're on the agenda. Um, they're presenting these two cases tonight and given the option of making a recommendation or attending as a party to the hearing. Doing nothing, taking no action.
And so these are actually my cases, so I'm going to, I'm going to take these. First is B C H twenty five oh five. It's a variance for size requirements for directional signs is defined under section twenty two dash twenty two dash one of the county code. Uh, this is a property in La Columbia election district, tax map eleven nineteen two. Uh, you may recall, a site development plan was accepted by the planning commission earlier this year for a warehouse distribution facility. And the applicant has submitted sign plans. Uh, directional signs typically are exempt from the sign ordinance, uh, which is twenty two dash fifteen dash three, the county code. However, the definition of directional signs in twenty two dash twenty two dash one limits such sizes to four square feet in size. Uh, what the applicant has proposed, the signs they're proposing on the premises exceed that size, therefore they've requested a variance. And just to remind everybody, that is the location of fifteen just south is on crossroads. And there's the property in question. So again, per what Jason said earlier, the com- the planning commission has three options. Do nothing, make a recommendation, or uh, planning commission could appoint someone to attend as a party to the public hearing.
What size was this sign to on the leave?
So they're varying sizes. Uh, I'd have to pull up the the app, I'd have to pull up the the request. But they were all, every every sign that they proposed was was more than four square feet in size.
It was like twenty some size, twenty seven size maybe?
Yeah, there were more than twenty signs, directional signs on the premises. And they're all, everyone, they're all more than four, four square feet.
You don't give many directions, four, four square feet is not very, very large, unless it's an arrow.
Yeah, sorry.
Unless it's just an arrow.
No, these are not arrows. These, these actually have the text on them.
And they're not huge signs.
No, I think, I think most of these are six to eight square feet in size. I'd have, I'd have to look it up to.
So is this an example or do we actually, are they actually making a decision here?
So, well, so I mean, I can, I can try and find an example, but so the planning commission basically needs to make a decision whether they want to. Again, do nothing, make a recommendation, or send someone to attend the the B C A meeting next Tuesday.
Well, since this is in my district, I would like to attend the meeting so I can um. Call some people's name, um, people who have looked at a sign and didn't know what the public hearing sign was about.
Okay.
Um, so I can explain it down. What it is, um.
I did find a letter that talks about the different sides. So there's sixteen of them that are five square feet. Uh, three are nine square feet. Um, seven are twenty square feet and one is four and a half square feet. So the biggest would be twenty square feet and there's seven of those.
So we could actually appoint Ms. Morgan to attend. The B D A and we wouldn't have to uh, make any approval.
Basically, like during the public hearing portion of the B C A, she could just come up and speak as the planning mission representative. Uh, if she wanted to, or he could just send less or either way, it's really up to you. Uh, or you, the planning commission to can, you know, advise her, we'd like, is the. Majority opinion of the language, we'd like you to share this with the B C A.
I'm sorry, when is that meeting again?
Uh, we from tonight, the nineteenth at seven P M. It'll be in this room.
I reckon I still need a motion, uh, that I've had this exact situation for, uh. Do I have a motion? On this. Recommendation.
I'm at the planning commission.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead. I was going to say, it depends on what the planning commission wants to do. That recommend a motion is that the planning commission wants to actually make a recommendation on. The the various requests itself. So if this planning commission wants to make, to make a motion to. Send Ms. Johnson Morgan, appoint Ms. Johnson Morgan, it basically that would be your motion. So.
That's what.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay.
Yeah.
If, if that's the consensus, but I.
I I reckon we need to uh, discuss that and.
Okay.
Decide, uh, uh, if we agree. To allow Ms. Morgan to attend this meeting.
Just from a procedural standpoint, I have a question, Mr. Dave, if you will. Um, so if if they were to just approve it flat out, it would, would the B C A meeting be? Would that not happen?
No, no, the B C A meeting would still happen. If they, if they were to, if they were to act on the that motion that's on your screen, that's just a recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, so so the B C A would still take action.
Okay.
It seems to me, and maybe I'm wrong, procedurally, if this Johnson Morgan goes. To scope out things. That is not a final decision, is it?
B C A will. After that, you're going to start at court.
So, so unless the, this, this group is going to send her with a message for them. To affect the decision that they made. Or to request that they consider something that they might not consider, unless she makes such a recommendation. I don't know what's to be gained by sending her at all.
So I think, you know, in some counties, you have a member of the planning commission that's also on the B C A. So like when I was on the Rapid County B C A, we had a member of the planning commission that was on.
We have in the past.
And so I think maybe this was introduced into our county code because we didn't have that here. So you still have, can have input from the planning commission on the B C A process. But it's unusual. I'd never seen a statute. It's not required by state code.
It was December was on that.
And then at some point, that changed, okay.
So can you tell us a bit more about? Why the size would be, I mean, twenty square feet from four square feet is a lot. Are there complaints, um?
I think it's because truck drivers are higher up. So this, yeah, trucks coming into a distribution center, size may be higher up so they can see and, you know. You know, in the directions and different languages, English, Spanish, and I think that's why some of those signs are bigger.
Are there directional signs up at the? Lawnmark distribution center? As an example?
I do not know. I've never been in there.
So all we would be doing is uh, moving that uh, the. Board of zoning appeal to make the decision.
Right.
You're just giving a recommendation. Kind of like you give a recommendation to the board of supervisors for something, you're giving a recommendation to the B C A. It's up to the B C A how they want to handle that recommendation.
I would just say it's four to twenty, multiplying by five sounds like a lot, but when you're, you're talking. Probably a four by five sign, which is not very big. I mean, four feet is teen.
Yeah.
And depending on how many directions they need to give people. It could need to be a little bit bigger, um.
This, but this, this is what this board does. They, they're supposed to do these things. Maybe we should just let them. Let them figure it out. Because these people are going to have to show up there and tell them what they want to do. And a lot more specificity than what we know about it.
And they'll, they'll. They'll have more information also than what we have tonight.
And now, what the planning question would do, like if they, down the road, if you wanted to change the definition directional signs. You know, to make it larger, for instance, you have six square feet, eight square feet. That's something the planning commission could do and introduce, but uh.
Where zoning appeals needs to be making a recommendation to us, basically how often people come to them and ask them for.
How is this different than that? Because the board has voted on sign variances before.
Well, waivers.
Waivers.
Okay, so what, Todd and I were talking about it. And if all these sign waivers coming through, really, that should be something that's more for the board of zoning fields. Because they deal variances, variances regarding height, sign height, sign, um, some max sign area. And it really makes more sense for these kind of applications to go through the B C A, if the board of supervisors granting waivers.
And where would these signs go?
They will be on the property.
On the property, not necessarily on fifteen. Okay, I guess that's why I was confused that.
Yeah, it'll be on the property, yeah.
It'll be on the property and, oh.
Oh, in thought.
So is there a different application process for a waiver, Allah, with the drive in did versus a variance?
I mean, it is a different application.
But the variance is essentially a waiver.
It is, it's just, yeah, correct.
Yeah.
But we, since we're starting to see more of these sign, um, variances, waivers, we thought it made more sense to come through the B C A. Because that's really, their focus is beyond the variances, rather than the board of supervisors. So it was a.
So they could have done a waiver.
They could. The problem of waivers is when you're waving your ordinance over and over, you really should be doing a text.
Right.
And so that's more like, it really doesn't make sense to keep waving this over and over, the same sections, but not doing a text to them. It's just kind of. Bad planning practice.
Well, if if we're looking at some of the development that we're seeing and then have, you know, we just rezoned another piece to I, I want up there recently. Um, we ought to probably, again, not a super high priority. But these are some of the things that we probably should be looking at moving forward so that. People can do what they need to do without the process being held up. And. Quite frankly, I think we're all sitting here enjoying talking about it. I'm enjoying spending my time, but, you know, if if we. If we could prevent, you know, unnecessary time spent on things, insert, and maybe it's a layover type thing. I I I don't know, but. I I see, I guess my point is, is that if if. If there, if the waivers or variances are continuously coming up, maybe it's time to look at what are we doing. Yeah.
Well, I'll do either way. I was assuming that these signs were actually directional signs on Rock fifteen.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, which is a different thing.
I will say there is a, there was a separate application for a a permit for a sign on the highway, but that sign is only six feet high. And it's like, it's only twelve square feet, so it's well within.
Business.
It's business sign, so it's well, it's well within uh, parameters. But the signs we're talking about here, they are on the property, yes.
So you know the ones that like if you drive down to Puma and you got those blue ones on there that show you admissions here or?
Those on.
Those types of signs, but they're, they're back off the front.
Well, I don't mean to go to that. Seriously, I don't. I honestly thought they were about fifteen.
That's fine. So so basically the planning commission can, can they can they just do nothing, or they can, can they can make a recommendation? Of course, the other option is if, if you wanted to go, you could.
No, I was more and more concerned if it was on Rock fifteen, even on the property itself. So no, I don't.
Okay.
That was my concern too, okay. And also, I've been. Pushing to to sort of get my voice to work, but um. As indicated, uh, I think if we're getting love these requests, we do do look at what the word says. Um, holistically and maybe make some adjustments for context in particular.
There's so many variances inside, you almost got, you know, have something because if you. Did it and just said, well, there can only be twenty square feet and then somebody might want twenty one square feet or something like that, so. I think probably not, still, I think it probably still needs to go to board of zoning appeals.
Ultimately, yes. Yes.
Um, can I just add that? So we're, according to twenty two eighteen four, we're doing this because that's codes. directs us to do. We're supposed to include a copy of the application so you get that.
So I may actually, we see if I have, yeah. We see if I actually have.
So basically, we've come to taking no action.
Yep.
Yep. Was it sign on the main?
That's the staff, I just said, and I was only including staff. Okay, so there was that case, and then we have twenty five oh six, which is another sign variance. Uh, this is a variance for maximum sign height requirements under twenty two dash fifteen dash three. This is for the Ash Market, the gas station in Fork Union, uh, recently rebranded as Marathon Station. Uh, Fork Union election, election district, tax map, tax map fifty one A ten. Uh, this is a business sign. The property is B, it's on B one business. Uh, freestanding signs, business signs in twenty and B one per twenty two fifteen three are limited to ten feet high. Uh, the applicant, that you may have noticed if you've driven by, they have a sign up already, which is meets that requirement. However. They're requesting a variance to allow them to raise the sign to twenty feet for safety reasons. Approximate location, the parcel in question. And so again, planning commission has three options, do nothing, make a recommendation. Or send a pla- send a planning commission members a party to the public hearing.
So.
I'm sorry. So this sign is pretty much, they want to put it back to where the original sign was?
Yes.
Yeah, so the Jake sign had to have been at least twenty five, nine point feet. And this sign, if you ride by it, it's, it's very deaky and look, this, this is the industry I'm in. Uh, I have grown up and my family has gotten a lot of business over the years from. People running into signs and us rebuilding signs that we built. We must have built the Matoka High School sign in Chesterfield twenty nine. I'm joking, but seriously, people run into signs all the time. This sign is ten feet. You literally could clip it with a car if you're driving by. I don't think it's a safe, I, I guess it could be argued that it's a safety, a safety reason. This sign i- i- we don't have any sort of grandfather clause. If this guy had just put on something on the existing pole that Jake had. It it would have been allowed to have been twenty feet, um, and it it looks pitiful, to be quite honest. It's a very nice sign if you've ridden by Ash Market.
Yeah.
Um, um, uh, Mike has done a great job of of of. Rebranding that place to to the marathon. It looks great.
Mm hmm.
Um, and I I obviously would, you know. Uh, say that, uh, that, you know, that that Jake sign was at least twenty feet and we ought to, if we're going to start talking about sign things. Especially in Fork Union where some of the signage is older and some people might start replacing signage there. At some point, if, you know, if we see some of the things we want to see there, might make a good idea to look at a grandfather clause where. At some point down the road, this this sign got a variance or a waiver from someone, that that may carry over with the property. Um, but I would kindly request, I don't have a say in the matter, that at least for this, and I've talked with Mike about this a lot. I thought this was going to be a waiver request that came to the board. Um, but I would ask if if the planning commission would oblige to at least make a recommended approval for the B D A, but obviously that's up to you all.
I kind of agree because I've ridden by their sign too and, you know, it's right there on the side of the road.
It's a really nice sign too.
And I was like, you know, you're so used to looking up high, especially if he's going to advertise. Gas prices like Jake did. They were up high that you could see before you get there. And um. Right now, it's so low. You can fly past it and not really know it's there, um. So I kind of agree.
Then you might look off to try to see it.
Yeah.
And so that could be the, the thing where they talked about safety reasons.
Or a truck runs into it. That's another safety issue, or a car or whatever runs into it. I mean, it's right there on the side of the road, so.
So we have a choice to not take any action at all, or recommend, uh. One of the um, the solutions that they have upon the thing. So we have to do both of these two separate things, right?
So, well, if if the planning commission takes no action, then there's, there's no motion needed. But if there's going to be a recommendation, we'll need a motion.
Do we recommend that we don't take any action, or do we recommend, do we make a recommendation?
I think we should recommend approval.
I think this was a little clearer.
Yeah.
I drove by there today.
I drove by there today.
Okay, okay, do I have a motion on B C A twenty five oh six?
I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the variance request, considered by the board of zoning. Appeal for a maximum height or maximum sign height is defined under section twenty two dash fifteen dash three. Of the Flumant County Code to authorize the maximum sign height for freestanding sign. Of twenty feet for a property located in the Fork Union Election District, and in time fine, this tax map. Uh fifty one dash eight dash oh one oh three.
Have a motion by Ms. Cal Patrick, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Morgan, all in favor say aye. Chair votes aye, crew five zero, we need to go back to the other one that was, are we not taking?
We're not, we're not taking up that one, that 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 got back up, we will bring that back in a later day.
Okay. There's no other business, at this time, we will open the second of public the. Comment section, anyone wishing to come forward to speak on any item, please come forward, uh state your name and address. And this is time to speak, it's not a question and answer session.
Donald Reiner, thirty five thirty one Union Mills Road, citizen, also a member of the B C A. And as I sit here and listen to uh businesses and this gentleman, I've seen him at a number of meetings. Um we need to become more pro county, pro business as a county, and. To run these businesses and make the owners jump through hoops and come to multiple meetings to multiple groups. Isn't what I consider pro business, and um what somebody does, once we approve a land, piece of land for particular use. If a warehouse is going in and uh the people need signage to perform whatever function that business is. Um I don't think the others have to come to fourteen different groups to to make that happen, so. Uh I know that you're one of the only fourteen, and I'm one of the others, so. But uh as a uh how we get to that point, as a county, I hope. Uh we can become more pro business like our friends in Louisiana and uh Goodland that are eating our lunch. Uh arguing at this point in time, so that's my two cents.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to come forward, please come forward, state your name and address, you're limited to five minutes, this is not a question and answer, so just. Just comments.
Amy Reiner, thirty one, thirty five thirty one, Union Mills Road, and I also uh feel very strongly about the signs. You know, grandfathering in something for one particular area of district of the county is not fair to the rest of the county, and we're trying to bring businesses, not determine. Uh and I know for a fact that we have a twenty thousand dollar uh Savannah County sign on the water tank at uh Zion Crossroads. And that tank is way further than twenty feet up in the air, so we want to promote the county, but we don't want them to allow the businesses. To promote their business, and that is just not, that's not eleven playing field for for the businesses. And that's a big deterrent when people have to jump through all these hoops, and you go to all these committees and all these, um you know, processes of variances and. Exceptions and exemptions and they, how can they do business? And you know, we keep wanting, wanting the businesses to come and be successful, but we don't really want to make it easy for them to do that. And again, it's just like, you know, it's. If the county's doing it, and it's a public owned, tax paid, for funded uh sign on on the water tower. Nobody has a problem with that. But we have a problem with the business and their signs, so I think we should. Just, you know, not even have all of these ordinances on the sign sizes. I mean, that's how people see, I know, when I'm going down the interstate, and I'm looking for a particular place to stop and get gas. The bigger and the taller that sign is, the more likely I am to get off on that exit and get my gas there. And we were trying to bring the business here to our our businesses, which we don't have, and we need very badly. So let's, let's promote the the bigger, better signs, so we can bring that business in. And stop preventing, you know, a particular size, and you got a grandfather in, you got to come to fourteen different meetings and and get approval. Then you got to, you know, fill out another form and then be charged another fee, and people can't take all that time off of work to do that. That's like a full-time job right there, just trying to figure out who to talk to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward, please come forward, state your name and address, you'll be limited to five minutes. See no one coming forward, we'll end the second of the two public comment sections this time. Uh do I have a motion to adjourn? Have a motion by Ms. Gil Patrick to adjourn, do I have a second? Have a second by Ms. Morgan, all in favor say aye.